First, we want to thank you Karen for participating in our virtual forum. And in our democratic process by running for office. We're glad that we can safely do these interviews through Zoom. I'm Virginia Gray and I'll be asking the principal questions and Linda Brown will be asking the follow up questions. And Julie McClintock has agreed to be the timer and anybody else that attends the call will be muted. We have a lot of questions to get through, so we're going to give you some suggested time limits. And we, as we ask these questions, we'll tell you how long you have and then Julie will encourage you to finish up if we get to the time limit. And as you can tell, we're videotaping the sessions and that's so we can make it available online in its entirety for other people to view. And if we do an abbreviated version, we will send it to you for review. So first, if you could, in about three minutes, tell us how long you've lived in Chapel Hill? And why you're running and what previous involvement in community issues or other experiences make you a good candidate at this point?
Sure, thanks. Well, I will start with the fact that I'm a Chapel Hill native. I was born at Memorial Hospital, which is now UNC Hospital. So I've lived in Chapel Hill more or less my whole life. I've gone away for first school and some adventures, but pretty much my, my life has been in Chapel Hill. My family moved here, so my dad could become a professor at UNC in the city regional planning department. My first house, our, our first house, I wasn't born yet, but I was on Hickory Drive over in Ridgefield. And so I grew up here as a university kid. And we were very involved in the community from a very, from the time I was, I was young, I stuffed envelopes for Howard Lee's Lieutenant Governor Campaign. My parents dragged me around to, you know, community meetings and political meetings, the way I do with my kids now. And I went to UNC as an undergrad. So I, I knew Chapel Hill from growing up. I knew Chapel Hill as a student. And then earlier in my career, I worked with the Orange County Family Resource Centers, which is a nonprofit that had kind of mini community centers in several of our public housing and historically black neighborhoods in Chapel Hill. And they're what's called family support centers. So we worked very closely with members of the community. They had advisory boards made up of community members. So it was a very asset based program that was really looking at working with families to help them meet goals for themselves, their children, whether it's parenting, employment, whatever, whatever it was. And that was how I got to know a different Chapel Hill that is often invisible to a lot of Chapel Hill residents. Of the members of our community who are housing insecure, food insecure, who, whose kids are, you know, struggling in school and don't have the resources a lot of parents do to in this community. And so that really has shaped my public service and community involvement since then. Even though I moved on from that, that work, I've stayed involved and that led me to serve on the Housing Advisory Board. I've been, you know, on the sit, my schools and, and so on. And then of course I ran for council four years ago and have been serving on, on the town council since. I'm raising my kids with my wife, Allison Graham. And she's a Superior Court Judge for Orange and Chatham. And
Okay, thank you. Okay, so a different kind of question. In recent years, pool developer campaign donations have become more common. Do you intend to accept donations, campaign donations for people outside of Chapel Hill who do business with the town? This is a two minute question.
Um, I don't need two minutes for that one. Like before, like my previous campaign, I've stated on my website and last time and this time that I am not accepting donations from developers, whether they're from Chapel Hill or, or elsewhere. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, the second set of questions is about a mix of housing. And first, and this is a three minute question, we want you to discuss affordable housing needs in our community.
Um, I have three minutes for that.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll do my best. So we, we all know that affordable housing is a critical need in this community. It's been a very strong focus of the council for these last four years. Certainly for me, it's been, I would say probably my top priority. That's part of what drove me to run for council in the first place was, you know, seeing that Chapel Hill has, is becoming increasingly homogenous and, and wealthy. And, you know, I think we talk about wanting Chapel Hill to be welcoming, to be accessible, to be affordable. And that's a lot more complicated than housing, but housing is a critical component of that. And so I am, while there's so much more to do, I'm proud of what the council has accomplished your last four years. We passed the first Affordable Housing Bond. We have, you know, invested, we're investing $6 million a year, all told, in affordable housing. I think we've really done a good job of strengthening our application of the inclusionary zoning ordinance. And when that doesn't apply to negotiating with developers to get as many units and affordable units compared to sort of what's happened in the past. We've had to push past developers coming to us saying, well, there's a precedent that, you know, you only did this and this in the past. And we've had to say that, that was then, this is now. And this is, you know, our, our community value. And our use of town properties, which, you know, as we know, the, the biggest challenge with affordable housing is the, well, several challenges, but the cost of land is so prohibitive to developing affordable and even kind of missing middle housing. And so when we can take that cost off the table, it really opens up a lot more opportunity and potential. So I think that's a really critical strategy. And then of course partnership and leveraging with, with the county, with the university, you know, the North Side Neighborhood Initiative has been a really effective partnership. And, and it's spread to, to Pine Knolls now, which is really important. And then our focus on rental, affordable rentals, which, you know, we know is, is especially hard and those units need to be even, even lower in price to be, you know.
Okay, thank you. Now Linda will have some follow up questions.
Sure.
Yes, I have two, two minute follow up questions. The first one is, what are your suggestions for avoiding the displacement of low and moderate income residents? And for ensuring that additional affordable housing will not be segregated by race or income?
And so, yeah, displacement is a really tricky one, we know. I think there are different drivers of, you know, gentrification. I think one of the key ones is, is lack of housing supply. You, I know Julie, in your email, you referenced the presentation we had on Friday, which I'm sure we'll talk about it at some point in this conversation, but when housing is scarce, that puts pressure on the housing we have and the pressure to redevelop it to, to meet needs, I think becomes even higher. So I think we have to think about our, our housing supply overall strategically. I also think that, you know, there's some opportunities if the town, we've been talking, really trying to push our, our, our strategy and our, our staff to, to be more proactive and less reactive. You know, the, if you look at some other communities, looking at sort of aging apartment stock is an opportunity for, you know, whether it's the town or a partnership, when a nonprofit would probably be better to purchase that housing and to rehab it and keep it affordable rather than necessarily letting it be redeveloped. And in some places, you know, the housing is very old and, and needs to be redeveloped, but other times I think there's an opportunity there.
Okay, second two minute question. How might additional, how might conditional zoning be used effectively by the town council to further the goal of providing a mix of housing for all incomes?
Um, conditional zoning is a great tool we have in a lot of ways because it allows us to, as a legislative process, to, to have conversations with, both with the community and of course with the applicant before us. With conditional zoning, we have to, it's a mixed bag. We are allowed to negotiate, which is a plus. We all have to agree. We can't dictate necessarily to the developer what they have to do. They have to agree to conditions. But I think, you know, that's definitely an opportunity that we've used as a council to, to get more affordable units to, to really have discussions about what does affordability mean? You know, I think a lot of times they go for the highest potential level of, of kind of affordability. And so we're able to negotiate for more affordable, affordable units. And so not only can we apply the inclusionary zoning ordinance, we can negotiate. I think also an opportunity which we do at times to provide density bonuses for additional affordable units. And I think there's probably more we can do and we need to kind of continue to, to study that. But I think we've used that to our benefit.
Okay, thank you. Now we're going to turn to growing a strong economy and I'll be asking four questions. So the first one is a three minute question. Has the form based codes as implemented in the Blue Hill District, which is my neighborhood? Does that strengthen our economy and how or how, how not?
Sure. So I think in terms of strengthening the economy, it has been effective in a lot of ways. You know, the, it's brought new businesses because it's brought more people, which we need to support the businesses. And I think, you know, again, kind of referencing that, the presentation from Friday, you know, the investments in, in placemaking are kind of the role of the town. And so we've gotten, you know, Kipos and Osterio Georgie and Kava and some, you know, other exciting new and local businesses in the area. The, you know, I, I live in Booker Creek and I, I'm a, a slow but dedicated jogger. And so I go around, you know, the area of East Gate and the Booker Creek Basin. And I certainly feel a lot safer. And I appreciate the new trails and sidewalks and ability to cross the highway a lot more safely. So I think that's all been good. You know, I will say it, you know, we've made, we've made it more walkable. That's good. But the placemaking, we haven't, didn't, didn't start out so well. The, obviously, as you know, the, the buildings we've gotten don't meet the, the kind of design standards and character that we, we want in Chapel Hill. The massing, and that's why we, you know, have supported the changes to the design standards that we've, we've made over the last years and adding more green space requirements. So, yeah, I think there's been good and trade offs.
I think Julie's Okay, turning to a different area, how might condition, how might conditional zoning and other policies be used to support locally owned businesses? And that's a two, two minute response.
Okay, um, I think conditional zoning is a, is a tool just like with, you know, trying to meet our residential goals. For instance, with the University Place Development, one of our agreements there was the inclusion of a small business incubator as part of that development. And that's going to help kind of grow local businesses. And I think that we could also, I think, you know, we could think about ways that we could maybe do the, a similar thing that we do with inclusionary zoning for residential. You know, not as a, as a requirement, but as a negotiation point that, you know, if you're developing office space, commercial space, that a percentage has to be for affordable business rentals, that kind of thing. So I think there's even more opportunity there that we could take advantage of. And again, you know, using Rosemary, the Rosemary Innovation redevelopment, that's not an example of where we've invested in the infrastructure to spur investment, private sector investment and bringing office space, retail space where, where we want it.
Okay, thank you. Now turning to the UNC Chapel Hill Housing Report that you mentioned, it was presented to the council on September 10th. And what lessons do you think we can learn from this study? That's a two minute answer.
Two minutes, oh my goodness. There was so much there. I've watched it a couple of times and I'm going to need to watch it some more. But, you know, I think that there were a lot of really important messages that came from that. The housing shortage that we have in Chapel Hill was a very clear message. And this is something that's happening nationally. That's not just Chapel Hill. But that, you know, it was pretty, pretty clear that we are not keeping up with the anticipated supply that we need and will need moving forward for, over the next 20 years. And then the, the need for placemaking is, was, was such a strong message. And, and the need, and that to do what we need to do. I think the consultant laid out the pathway is really clearly of where we're headed if we do nothing, if we do this extremely well, and if we continue the way we've been going, which doesn't work. I think we kind of all agree, it's not working. So we have a really important choice to make. Are we going to become, you know, a even more homogenous, wealthy enclave cut off from, you know, the rest of the, the region and the state? Or are we going to create the housing and the market that we need to have a diversity of, of population and workers and jobs? 90% of, of people are, of jobs in our community are filled by people who don't live here. So the traffic we have is, is, is coming in and going out.
All right, thank you. And then the last question under this topic, which we're looking for a two minute response again. What do we know about how the cost of town services versus the tax revenue income of residential housing on the town's budget? To kind of the ratio between those two?
Well, I think there's been many studies that show, including the town, I have one from several years ago, that show that compact development is less costly to local government than sprawled, serving sprawled neighborhoods. So, and so far, you know, with the multifamily rental that we've had, the, the data shows that there are very few children living there in those buildings, whether, you know, we, we like that or not is a different question, but, but it's the fact there, they've contributed little traffic and they're paying significant new taxes, which is easing the tax burden on our homeowners. And the, we know with the budget, we've been, you know, budgeting very carefully for the town last many years. We're not adding new positions. The increases in the budget have been, you know, well deserved raises, the crazy increases in health insurance costs. So while there, I'm not saying there are no costs to a town, there certainly are, but I, I think that they're, they're outweighed by the new revenues, especially for those denser projects that don't require, that aren't requiring so far significant new services. And because, you know, multifamily buildings are taxed as commercial. The data shows that those buildings are filling up, but even if they weren't, they're paying commercial taxes on them. So that's millions and millions of new tax revenue a year.
Thank you. And now we want to turn to building a green infrastructure. And the first question where we're looking for a three minute response is, what are your priorities for green infrastructure for the town? Things such as parks, tree canopy, transit, stormwater control, greenways, green space? And how would you act upon them as a council member?
And that is a huge question. Be comprehensive, but I'll, I'll focus on a couple of things. Yeah, this spring I had a conversation with some of the leaders from the Parks, Parks and Rec Commission and also with the Parks Director. And talked about our needs there. And we really would, based on that, I've been advocating for the town to start a new master planning process for our parks and greenways and green spaces. The plan we have is outdated. And we know how much our community values is the spaces, how important the ability to be in nature is, especially over the last year and a half. But we need an inventory of what we do have and then what we need moving forward based on kind of future growth. I know there are formulas and whatnot about kind of what those ratios should be, but I don't think we have the data that we need to know how to plan for the future. And, and you know, we need to have access spread out around town. We need to have creative spaces for different ages, different needs of our population. Whether it's, you know, pickleball, whether it's, you know, interactive kind of woods and green spaces. And we need to overlay all our goals. We need to stop planning in silos. So we need to think about, you know, our greenways are for exercise, they're also for transit. They're also helping to connect our community and get people out of cars, which is, you know, another very critical goal for, for me and how I think about our, our priorities. And, and our climate plan. And, and we have to overlay, you know, we can't forget our, you know, we have to have an understanding. Did you signal me? I was just going to talk about equity in, in all of those plans.
Linda has some follow up questions on this topic.
Um, the first question is a two minute question. In fact, all of them are two minute questions. What are your ideas for how town council might direct the use of open tracts of land such as Legion Road, East Town, the Green Tract and J Street?
Um, I think it's probably a different answer for each of those. But I think, again, I'll go back to what I just said in terms of, we don't have an understanding of, of all the needs, I think. What are green space and park needs? What are our, our connectivity needs? What are our housing needs? How do we overlay that? So we're, we're planning comprehensively and get out of these silos. How are we taking into account the history of those spaces? And ensuring that we're righting historical wrongs, that we're serving communities equitably. That all has to be thought out. It's not an easy, you know, yes or no answer to any of those. But we have to keep in mind our, you know, the rural buffer and, you know, that is limiting our developable land. And there's some trade offs that come along with that. And, you know, going back to the Friday presentation, we have to talk about those trade offs in an open, honest way and not pretend they don't exist. If we are keeping that, that boundary and, and keeping the character around, around the town of the farm and green space and forests, there are trade offs to how we're using our land within the boundary. And, but if we do really smart strategic planning, I think we can, we can have really nice green spaces, pocket parks, nature within town, while also meeting our housing, our transit, our climate goals. But we have to, again, think about all of those things together and not take them as individual silo decisions.
Okay, second two minute question. How might the town's climate action plan be revised to address short term achievable goals? Give an example.
Um, well, I, the climate plan was just passed. I'm really proud that we were able to pass the first climate action plan. And I think it's, it was very well researched and data driven. There had significant community input. So I think the time now is to act. I think we, you know, the council has built in check ins and it certainly should be a living document that we're revising as we learn, as we get new input. As, you know, sadly, things worsen and at the global level. But I think what we need to do now is to implement it and take the, the steps that we can. The key is to figuring out what can we, we do at the local level? We know this is, we need action on the global level, the national level, the state level. But there are really important things we can do at the, at the local level as well. And, and also we need to strengthen collaboration with our neighboring jurisdictions. And we need to advocate to the state, you know, who still kind of pretends climate change doesn't exist. But to me, again, I think the biggest thing we need to do is accelerate our investments and connectivity and getting people out of their cars. The commuting, the driving is, is just hugely harmful in every way.
Okay, um, what pedestrian and bike improvements would you prioritize? Two minutes.
Um, so this is one of my top priorities. And you, luckily, we actually have a really good mobility and connectivity plan in place. And that, whose aim is to reduce vehicle miles traveled in town. The key is to do it more quickly. The Environmental Stewardship Board and the Transit Board met together this spring to, to look at this very question about what, how do we prioritize? You know, what, if we have resources, where are we going to get the most kind of connectivity for a buck, if you will? And I agree with their, their recommendations. I think they were well thought out. The Morgan Creek connective, both going east and west are, are two of the priorities. The connecting Amstead up to the Carboro Line, continuing that Bowling Creek Greenway. And, and then the Estes Drive extension and the Raleigh Road extension. So I think this, this has been well studied and I agree with those recommendations.
Hey, thank you. And now we want to turn to supporting community engagement. And the first question is, the town council and staff have had many outreach planning exercises. And they've adopted town plans that reflect that public engagement. How would you be guided by these plans as you make land use decisions? And we're looking for, I think, a two or three minute answer.
Sure, um, so a couple of things I'll say, you know, I think the, the future land use map The, the future land use map is the sort of most recent and up-to-date plan we have. So that's kind of my starting place for um, the, you know, that looks out over the next thirty years. Um, and also recognize that, that it incorporates a lot of existing strategies that we have. Um, that we, that we should be using in our decision-making. Um, so I think that, again, this is kind of my theme of we have to get out of this silent thinking. Um, and I think we've taken some steps to do that and there's more we need to do. But, so we need to also be thinking about our climate action plan, our mobility plan, our Parks and Greenway plan. Um, and our affordable housing plans, um, along with, along with that. We, we did try to sort of incorporate that into the flume as much as we could, but there's only so much you can put into uh, one, one map. Um, and uh. So, you know, we know that a lot of community engagement went into those plans. Um, and uh, we. But we also have to understand the stra- the sort of context in which those plans were, were developed. And the assumptions, because sometimes those assumptions don't, don't come true, they don't hold up. Um, so, you know, I think we have, the application of the strategies has to have some, some flexibility as, as well.
Thank you. Linda has some follow-up question.
Yeah, um, how will you handle citizen requests and comments? What efforts will you make to increase public engagement? Especially with marginalized communities to meet the needs of residents.
Uh, this has been a really top priority for me on council. Um, I don't think our current uh, sort of public engagement. Uh, structures and strategies are very effective in getting uh, you know, a diverse uh, viewpoints of the community. I don't think we hear from enough people and we don't hear from uh, enough of a diversity of, of people. Um, which is why uh, I've called for the development of an equitable community engagement strategy. Um, they have one in Durham, they have one in other uh, other municipalities. That's designed to um, bring new and innovative structures and, and strategies to how we engage. And it, it is hard, uh, you know, it's hard to follow local government, it's hard to um, you know, understand. Or uh, kind of get caught up. If you watch one meeting where there's, you know, one of ten meetings on a topic. It's very hard to understand what's going on. Um, so we have to figure out how to, how to um, engage in a different way. Um, especially with um, our historically underrepresented populations in government decision-making. Um, and I'm really excited that uh, our new DEI officer is going to be taking the lead on thinking some of these things through. And we're trying to see things differently. And another important way that we engage is through um, advisory boards. Um, but our advisory boards also are not terribly representative. Um, we've been working on that very hard to get uh, greater diversity in terms of age, race, ethnicity, gender, lived experience. But we have to do a lot more and we have to make it easier, I think, to serve on those boards.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the final question. Uh, could you please give us an example of a town council decision that you agreed with? We'll ask you in a minute about one you disagreed with, but tell us now about one you agreed with and explain why you agreed with it.
Sure. Um, well, I'll use a very recent example. Um, I agreed with it because I was part of a petition to um, do it. Uh, but I agreed with putting the stormwater basin plans on hold. Um, even though they had, you know, the, the plans had been in the works for years and years. The Stormwater Board had approved them, the Environmental Stewardship Board had approved those plans.
What? We didn't approve them, but anyway.
Which is we?
The Environmental's Board hadn't.
Oh, I understood.
Seen them, yeah. We're, we're gonna discuss it at a future meeting.
Oh, okay. Well, I know the Stormwater Board did approve them.
You're correct.
Um, uh, but um, you know, I think um, thanks to really Jeanette Bench. Um, and the, the really thorough and uh, Barbara Driscoll. Uh, the really thorough um, kind of analysis they did and brought forward. Was um, really uh, really helpful, really important. And um, and I, I think that's a really great example of where the council said, uh, you know. Oh, huh, you know, we don't always get every single thing right and, you know, we can talk about processes and all of that. Um, but, you know, it was uh, sort of an unintended consequence that was brought to our attention. And we're like, ah, timeout, uh, you know, we need to do some rethinking. Um, and I think that was, that was the right decision. And, you know, now we're on a path where we have to figure out how we're going to. Um, determine what the right decision is. And there's a lot of different perspective and voices that need to be heard in that. Um, but I think that was, that was the right decision to me.
I, I had a quick follow-up on that, Karen. So if, if that, we were to do that whole thing again. And the uh, engineers came in with a recommendation and things started rolling forward. How would you engage with the citizens? Because the town staff is saying, well, we, we had some meetings, you know. People were invited, of course, how did they find out about them? It would be hard, maybe. But um, the neighbors very much feel that they were caught blindsided. So do you have any suggestions about how that could have been improved?
Um, mu- much of that was before I was on council, but I, I think it, it is, uh, I mean, it. It is hard because a lot of these things, especially bigger projects, are worked on for years and years. And there is public, there are public meetings that, but it, as I said, it's hard to keep track of something that's going on over five years, right? That's a long time. Um, and so, I, I don't know the answer to that. Um, I think that's part of our sort of rethinking of our public engagement processes. Um, is uh, building in some, some uh, you know, kind of. It, for long-term, maybe it's an annual report out to the community or, or something like that, that we try to make more um, more public, more. And without a newspaper, I mean, the, i- it's a complicated issue that I think we're, we all are, are struggling with. Um, but it also, we have to be careful because we don't want to undo the work that's been done of, you know. The public that did contribute ideas during that five years. We don't want to say, well, never mind with that, we're gonna start over. Because there are like, I think, Linda, you just typed a question. What about the, the businesses who are flooding? They have a, a, an interest in this topic too, and we haven't heard from them. And so that's.
I'd like to address that if you would like to, to address the question that Linda put in there, which is.
Let's see, I didn't read the whole thing.
Yeah, have you talked to small business owners to determine their needs and provide support for them? The Stevens Report says what the council has done has not worked. That has made the town problems worse. What do you plan to do to change course and correct these problems?
Um, eh, are you referring to the flooding or I'm not?
Linda?
Um, the um, the fact that Blue Hill is not walkable. Um, that Aura is not going to provide any commercial space. Um, and the um, the, the, the proliferation of apartments. When there is a need for town homes at various price points that people can buy. All of those problems have been exacerbated by decisions that the council has made since I've been here in the last three years.
Well, Aura does have commercial space. Um, I think we have a need for more housing. Um, personally, as someone who walks and rides bikes and uh, slowly jogs around Blue Hill. It is more walkable, far more walkable than it was. Um, I think there's, there's definitely more to do. East Gate is a really interesting, I think you all have, have talked about that before. I think, you know, I think we all have a dream of East Gate being redeveloped and that uh, you know, the creek being, being daylighted. Um, which I think is, would be fabulous. Um, and you know, the reality is, in order for that to happen, we'd have to allow. Who, whoever owns it at that point to um, to redevelop that. And in order to make that work, they'd have to go up. And, but they could do some really amazing placemaking.
Yeah, Chelton, Chelton's advocated that early on, yeah.
Yeah, and I think that would be uh, that would be great. But um, yeah, I think, you know, uh, going back to the question around the, the stormwater basins. Uh, that is a great example of where we need to hear from different, all, all the, all the voices. Around those decisions. Um, and, you know, I, I live um, Booker Creek Trail, we are on it every single day. I, I love our greenways and trails. I don't want to, you know, cut down trees along our, our greenways and trails. Um, and I want to find a better uh, solution, but we can't just say, well, we're not gonna do that. And so sorry that your businesses are gonna keep flooding. You know, the council has multiple um, needs and perspectives. That we have, we have to consider and, and, and help. And so uh, we are always looking to figure out, how do we, how do we balance and trade off? The, the different needs, perspectives, interests. Um, and that's what makes being on council challenging. And um, and, you know, interesting and um, important. These are really important decisions uh, that we wrestle with every week.
Karen, what did you think about the uh, in, the uh, presentation by Michael Dupree, what they're doing in Durham? With as, at-risk youth involving them and a whole green infrastructure program? Did you think that was something we could do here? I, I mean, I'd be very excited about that myself.
Um, yeah, I thought that was really interesting and uh, exciting. I was, I was really happy to learn about that. I think it has potential. Um, my understanding, and again, I, I need to dig a lot deeper into some of these things. Is that their focus was more on water quality than water quantity. So I think it's a great idea. I don't know that it would, you know, just fix.
It would apparently. We, you know, I've been a little bit involved with the group and, and apparently, if you do enough grain gardens. You can cancel out what you would achieve with a basin.
Well, and I think that's exactly the data we need, right, is, is um, to do some cost-benefit analysis of these alternatives. And figure out, you know, I don't think it's gonna be one answer, it's gonna be a combination. So what's the best combination of alternatives um, that will, that will address the, the issues? Um, and preserve our, you know, our, our woods.
And what Durham is doing eh, with the, the, the young people parallels the uh, idea at the national level. There's a bill to um, have a civilian conservation. And it would employ some of the same kind of uh, young people. Um, okay, the, the very last question we wanted to get to was. Uh, has there been a town council decision that you disagreed with and why so?
Um, I think uh, one of my, uh, I think. A big lost opportunity was Amity Station. Um, I think that was an example of where, you know, and I, I don't know that we could have gotten to a good, good place. I think the developer was, was challenging in many ways, but um, you know, I think. One of the, one of the things we have to do is bounce, balance and, and advocate for our community needs. Um, but also understand um, again, trade-offs. I talk about trade-offs a lot. Um, you know, we pushed and pushed for um, for a variety of, of, of. Um, you know, community benefits and, and needs from that, that um, developer. Um, and some really important ones, but in the end, uh, that negotiation broke down. And now um, he's building exactly what we didn't want, right? So uh, my, my, and I wasn't in the room, I came in while that had already been, you know, going on. But um, you know, I think we have to figure out that, that, that balance between um. What happens if we do nothing, uh, to quote our, our consultant from Friday. Um, and we did nothing and now we're getting, I think, five um, you know, buildings just under the, the line. You know, nineteen thousand nine hundred nine nine square foot student housing with no community benefits and.
What would you have liked to have seen, Karen? What would you have liked to have seen there?
Um, well, I think what we talked about and what the, the committee was advocating for early on. Honestly, I forget all the details, but it had, you know, live workspace and there was an age requirement, you know, age limit. Um, uh, because we need, we need year-round residents downtown, right? We've talked about that for a long time to support our businesses and to some, to have workers downtown. Who are not commuting um, elsewhere and um, so.
What happened is they refused to do any of those things.
Well, I, I, I think they had agreed to some. I feel like we kept moving the bar. Um, you know, but what about this? What about that? Um, I think, uh, you know, I was at that meeting that um, with Northside where they made some commitments that were really exciting. And then they walked away. So I don't know that things could have gone differently because of that particular developer. But I do think it's a cautionary tale of, you know, what happens when we, if we push too hard and we're unrealistic. And then we get nothing. Um.
Well, thank you so much. We're at the uh, appointed hour of nine AM, so we need to bring this to a close.
But Karen, this is. Thank you so much.
Thank you. It's, yeah, we don't get to talk that often about this policy, right? It's, it's kind of fun.